Okay, I'm going to call the meeting to order at 6:04. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? No? 3.0, Audience and Communications. Is there anyone in the audience who's here to speak about anything other than the budget and taxes? Okay. Then we'll move into 4.0, Discussion Matters. 4.1, Budget Hearing, Overview of the Proposed Budget FY '14. And if you all will hang with me for a few minutes, I just want to go back kind of through where we've been with this whole budget process so that if people have questions or we have discussion, we're all kind of starting with a similar knowledge base. This, before I get going too far, I just want people to know that the Board takes very seriously its challenge to balance providing a quality education at a price that the community can afford. We are all very much aware of the fiscal environment and the unknowns that are out there. And we all, all of us have also been through several years of significant reductions to the budget. So within that context, we have approached this budget season. Our mission, our whole goal for being here is to develop citizens who learn, act and collaboratively, think creatively and critically, live responsibly and respectfully, contribute positively to their community, and pursue excellence in their academics and individual In addition, our Board has adopted, and the other SU Boards will adopt later this spring, a set of outcomes that we hope all of our students from CCS will graduate ready for future success and seen in the areas of a robust academic foundation, citizenship, and life skills. And there's much more information on what the specifics of that are on our website. But just know that we have developed those and we spent a lot of time developing them and trying to develop a budget that will help us achieve these outcomes. We have had, this is our eighth budget meeting that we've held since September. We had a budget forum back in October that was sparsely attended. I think there were maybe a handful of people who attended that. We have received more final numbers in January, once the state provides us with our equalized pupil count and what our definite revenue numbers are. And we still are working on guestimates on tax rate and base debt amount. Just a brief reminder of where we have been over the past several years with our budget. We held flat for two years back in '08, '09, and '09, '10. We have seen significant decreases to our budget. We had a slight increase in our budget last year when some grants that had been previously funded ran out, and we absorbed the cost of those grants. In addition, we had additional special education money, and we absorbed the cost of that. And the last column is the budget, proposed budget for this year as it currently stands, which is 6.43 percent. I just thought I would point out, because I like numbers, that the budget this year is a 2.12 percent increase over the budget from 2009, 2010. And just for fun, I thought I would look at what the CPI change was, inflation was, from 2009, '10 to today. Inflation went up 7.2 percent. So even though our budget has increased, we're dealing with increased costs, fixed costs, and we've been able to absorb those. But you can only keep the heat off in a building for so long. You'll see also that our enrollment is on a slow decline over the past few years. This year, I believe K-8, we have around 422 students. Next year, we're anticipated, estimated to have around 410 students. That number doesn't always happen in one grade, however. We don't lose a whole grade full of kids at once. And where we are with our numbers, it's a bit difficult to predict what the class needs are going to be, and you'll see in our next slide what I mean by that. But we have had a declining enrollment, and over the past few years, we've really tried to align our resources with that enrollment. We've eliminated six full-time classrooms. Classroom teachers are gone. If you remember, last year, we actually reduced seven classroom teachers, and over the summer, we got an influx of first graders. So we had to hire back a first-grade teacher in order to keep our class sizes under 20 in first grade. That number was not included in our baseline budget, and you'll see that it's been added back to our budget. We hired that position, I believe, in August. We've eliminated administrative positions. We've cut literacy positions. We've aligned our guidance, our PE, our art, our word language to meet our declined enrollment. We've eliminated enrichment, tech education, bookkeeping, bus runs, nurses, co-curricular, you name it, we've looked at it, and chances are, it's been reduced.
What does it mean if it's less than one?
It means that it's not the full position. So it wasn't one full-time position, so .5 would be 20 hours a week, you know, that's what it means. Does that answer your question? I know this is a little hard to read, it always is, but it's hard to get nine classes up on here. Basically, this is what our current enrollment is and what our class sizes are and what it's projected to be for next year. I can tell you, basically, our average class size in K-4 is 18.6. The average class size for all of CSSU is 18.6. Our average class size for 5'8" is 19.46, and CSSU averages is about 23. So here we are with this year's budget, with, right now as it stands, over $400,000 worth of increases. It's primarily due to two major and one somewhat smaller driver. The big ones are special education. We are required by law to provide that. We don't have a say in that. Health and salary increases. Contractually, we have an obligation to provide benefits to our employees, and the contract this year called for a 3 percent increase in salary. What was unknown to us and which is new to us is that the health insurance premiums have increased by an estimated 14 percent. Historically, our health insurance premium increases have been between 2 and 3 percent. So a 14 percent increase is significant. Our CSSU purchase services, some of which also we are required to provide, have also gone up. Our English Language Learner, our population and demographics in Charlotte are changing. We have an increased need for English Language Learner teachers, which we are required to provide. This Connected Youth Program, which previously had been funded with grants and we made a small contribution towards, the CSSU Board chose to fund all of it via the budget and when the grants are received, to then reimburse the schools. So the full cost of the CY program is in our budget this year for our portion. And then the Connected Math Program. We have the original edition of the math textbooks for our middle school math program. They're now onto the third edition that is aligned with the Common Core, and the CSSU Board made the decision to fund the purchase of those for our middle school.
How close that big jump in the healthcare costs?
My understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, is it's based on actual prior use. Health insurance premiums for VHI are based on prior use. When we get our, we pool all of our employees with all the other employees in the schools throughout the state to purchase health insurance through VHI.
VHI, Invisbit?
VHI, Invisbit. And that's not only current employees, but it also is retired employees as well. And our premium increase is based on prior years or some formula related to actual use of the insurance, correct?
Sure.
So this is happening to schools across?
Yeah, every school across the state is seeing the same increase in their health insurance.
Is the special ed increase because of a higher enrollment of special ed kids, or is it more services for each kid we have mandated by the state?
Both. We have, we have an increase in number of children in special education set for next year than we have this year. We also have a larger number of children needing moderate to intensive needs of services next year as we do this year.
And the state is asking for more services for each kid, anyway? Or is it just?
The state says we have to provide, we don't, we don't have a choice. We have to provide the services that those children require.
So since you're a number cruncher, you said that the budget from '09, '10 to the projected budget this year is only a 3 percent. If you could maybe at some point do the same for teacher salaries and the same for healthcare since these seem to be the driving increases this year, I'd just be curious to see how much they are versus how much our overall budget is.
I know, I can tell you that in general, our salaries, our employees, personnel make up 80 percent, around 80 percent of our budgets. But the exact increase from '09, I haven't, I haven't done that. Go ahead.
Percent of the healthcare costs do your employees pay out of pocket?
Right now, contractually, our employees are paying 15 percent. We currently pay 85 percent. That has increased in the last contract cycle. They have been paying 12 percent. There's actually an interesting caveat about the employee's contribution and this new unknown health insurance that we're about to jump into. There is a provision in, I actually believe it came from the Obamacare piece, that says that teachers' contribution to their health insurance can't increase more than 5 percent over what it was in 2010, or else they, we lose our grandfathered status within VHI. And since no one really knows what it's going to cost, and we would then have to go on the exchange. And since no one really knows what the exchange is going to cost, it kind of puts a limit on to what we could contractually ask or bargain with the Teachers Association, ask them to pay without losing our grandfathered status. The recommendation that we received from VHI, which is the insurance group, and the Vermont School Board Association was, if you are negotiating contracts right now, make sure they're short-term, because we don't know, long-term, what's going to happen with the healthcare.
How much of the special education costs are reimbursed via Medicaid?
I don't know what the Medicaid portion is. We do get a percentage of that cost, the $212,000 reimbursed. I think it's in the revenue section. It might be around, somewhere around $100,000. We get reimbursed on that.
And one more question. When is the present teacher's salary expiring? Contract?
So the, we just renewed the contract for a year, so we will start negotiating in the fall to begin a successor agreement for the beginning, the 2014, '15 school year. So the budget after this one that we're currently in.
The health salary increase number, now that's two different numbers, right? One part of it is the health insurance increase and the other part is the salary increase. Do you know the breakdown? Which portion of that $188,000 is for salary increase and what portion is for health insurance increase? Do you know?
I don't have that level of detail. I don't know if we have that level of detail here right now.
I can back into it because we know exactly what 1 percent of health is, and so if I do some fancy math, we can get to that. The largest portion is salary. I mean, the 3 percent salary far off strips the 14 percent increase in the healthcare costs, but.
The way it looks, you know, it looks like the health insurance is the killer. I mean, to me, at least the chart, anyway.
It's a killer if you look at, look at the annual rate of increase, but the healthcare costs.
The base chunk itself.
Yeah, but I can, I can work on that.
Thank you. Bob, and then I'll get you here.
Lynn, if we're being assessed a 14 percent increase in healthcare costs, then the other schools which are in, non-Scharlot schools, which are in the non-CCS education portion of our tax rate are also being assessed at 15 percent, correct?
Yep.
So that portion, besides the Charlotte portion of our tax rate going up, the non-Scharlot portion will also go up because of, say, for example, high school, correct?
Correct. Exactly. You're right. Everybody's, everybody's budget has gone up, and you'll see that across the state in the number of budgets that are going to require the two votes. But yes, CVU's budgets, health insurance went up 14 percent, Burlington's went up 14 percent, Bennington's 14 percent. I, I don't know if there's any school that doesn't participate in VHI, but, but we're all in the same boat when it comes to that.
When you're done with this, I want to go back and look at the tax rates as we talked about earlier today.
Yep, we can do that. Eric?
I don't know.
Okay. Tom?
In hindsight, how would all of that changed had there been teacher contract negotiations that would have increased the percentage of what they had to pay? Was there any thinking ahead of what could have happened, which is now has happened? In terms of what they do pay is against honestly what they should pay?
Well, I think, having sat in that negotiations committee, and if you remember, we were 18 months negotiating a contract.
I do.
I think we looked historically at the numbers. We have a very good community member who has kept excellent data of all the percentage increases and costs over the past 10 years. And I don't think there was anything that would have led us to believe that we were going to see a, a number increase in our health insurance from 2 percent up to 15 percent. My sense is, just in sitting in negotiations, had we said, hey, you guys got to pay more because your health insurance is going to go up, the response would have been, well, if our health insurance is going to go up and you want us to pay more, you got to pay us more so we can afford. You know, there's two sides to every, to every quorum. But to answer your question, we didn't, we didn't anticipate a 15 percent increase in our health insurance.
And that's a gamble that we all now have to look at in terms of how much more we have to pay, because that was not the thinking that should have occurred. There's no guarantee in increases in costs. And unfortunately, that's part of the reason why we're in the fix that we're in right now. There isn't enough thinking ahead as to what increases may be. And I've said this before, it's all cumulative. And we're talking about, well, nickel and dime and pocket change here and there, but this pocket change continues to add up to amounts that become burdensome. So that's what I mean about hindsight. I don't believe there was enough thought given to that contract negotiation process.
Well, you're entitled to your opinion. I think the Board has been very conscious to, to try and be as thoughtful and try to think as much ahead as we can. We also have been tasked with cutting the budget. So you don't want to, you can only plan for so many contingencies before you're increasing the budget to cover contingencies that may or may not happen. It's a gamble. It's, hey, I'm the first person to tell you, I would love to live in a black and white world, but this isn't a black and white decision-making. It's sometimes not that cut and dry. Any other comments before I move on?
Answer to the earlier question.
Oh, answer to question?
Eighty thousand healthcare and the balance in salaries.
So did everyone hear that? It was about an $80,000 increase in healthcare and a thousand, a hundred thousand in salary.
Really rough.
Really rough. So one of the things that the Board asked for the administration to do is to provide us a vision budget. What things should we be adding to our budget in order to provide that quality education that Charlotteers come to expect? And also would lead us towards our outcomes that I talked about before, a robust academic foundation, life skills, and citizenship. They came to us with a number of decision packets that range from mobile computer carts with laptops, which would help us meet the need that we're going to have to take our standardized testing in a few years. That's all going to be done on computers. Currently, we only have computer carts for our middle school. That testing begins in third grade. We discussed full-day kindergarten quite a bit last week. It was a very passionate discussion. We opted not to fund that. I should come back. The mobile computer carts, we're going to finalize our decision on tonight. We chose not to fund the Young Writers Project class. Science applies, even though Charlotte has the highest science test scores in the state. And I did a cursory glance at the New England states that take the kneecaps. I actually think we have the highest kneecap science scores in New England. We chose not to fund a middle-level literacy specialist, knowing that personnel adds the greatest amount to our budget. We asked the administration to come back to us next year when they look at reconfiguring the entire K-8 with support systems and maybe look at it then, but we weren't going to fund it right now. We're not buying books for our little guys. We chose not to increase our nurse by .1 FTE to have full coverage, even though we do have kids at our school who have significant medical issues. We are not funding the Four Winds Nature Program, and at this time, still under discussion, is whether we pay for the substitutes for professional development, which our teachers are taking. I mean, if we don't, if we don't fund it, the money's got to come from somewhere because the teachers are taking the professional development. Our hope is that with most of those, or a good chunk of those, our PTO or some other unknown funding source will step in and, and help fund that. But again, the Board is conscious of the fiscal impact of their decisions on the budget, and this was not a decision that was made in a day. This decision has been discussed and debated, and many sleepless nights have been had for the past six weeks on these, and we're still having them. Yep. So we have a computer lab here. So if a teacher's in the classroom setting up a lesson and there isn't a mobile computer cart, they make an appointment here on the door with all the other K-4 classes to come in and do a lesson on the computer. I mean, so what the mobile lap, a mobile cart is, it's a, it's 20 carts, so basically enough for one classroom. It allows it to be in the classroom. So when a teacher is ready for the lesson, it's there, it's accessible, so that you're using technology not as something that you have to make an appointment to use, you're actually trying to integrate technology into your teaching, which is kind of the whole purpose. I mean, we would never make an appointment to use a paper and pen, you know, to go to a room and use a paper and pen. It's there, it's ready, it's accessible. The slot, the mobile laptops would allow that. Most schools.
And be mobile means they can take it to more than one classroom.
And they can move, right, exactly, can be moved. And the two carts that we were looking for, one would be for the third grade and one would be for the fourth grade.
I thought you decided in the last meeting that you were going to do half.
We are going to, we're going to discuss it again tonight.
Okay.
Okay, I was on the slide. So as of tonight, with the numbers that I've given you so far, we basically are looking at our budget of 7,392, excuse me, 556,000, less our revenues. Our revenues are flat from last year. They didn't increase, they didn't decrease. They're basically flat, which is an issue, which leaves a net ed spending of 6,503,158. The reason that number is important is because you take our number of equalized pupils and you divide that into, into the 6 million, and you end up with a spending for equalized people of 15,178.
So why did you have to pull up 100,000 from special ed that you're going to need first?
Because we had 100,000 in revenue last year that we had left over from our money that we applied to our revenues last year. So we, of last year, I think we had 888,000. Really, we had 788,000 plus the 100,000 our money. That our money's not there anymore, so our revenues are back down to 789, plus 100,000 from special ed. Gets us basically to, to where we are right there.
What's the average cost per pupil across the state?
Per equalized pupil?
Yeah.
It's, do you have that two-vote sheet? I think it's 12,000, 12,000 something.
How?
I want to say it's like 12,100 and something, but I could be very wrong about that. It's like, it's in the 12,000 range. That was last year. This year, my guess is it's going to be increased a bit. Can I get, move on? We'll get back.
I'll get back to you.
So there are five drivers to the property tax. The one that the school board has control of is in red, the school budget. The CLA is the Common Level of Appraisal, which is determined by home sales and home appraisals in the state, the state tax rate, which the legislature sets, which right now they have tentatively stated is going to increase 3 percent to .92 from .89. The base education amount, which is set in statute, but the legislature tends to decide how they're going to move or not move that number. And then enrollment.
$12,789 is the statewide average for '12, '13.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. When you look at, so we have control over the school budget, but we don't have control over the entire budget. We've shown this slide before. Basically, the items here are what we have little control over and what we have a lot of control over. Now along the bottom is what has a little impact on the budget and what has a high impact on the budget. You can see the things that have a high impact on the budget, like special ed, we don't have a lot of control over. Salaries, we have some control over, depending on where we are contractually. Where we have the most control and it has a high impact on the budget is staffing, class size, and curriculum, which is why, when you look at the list of everything we've reduced over the past several years, it's been staffing, which has increased our class sizes, and we've reduced our curriculum. So when you look at the tax implications, this side are the dollars. This side over here is the increase from last year. Like I said, our budget is up, our revenues are flat, means our ed spending is up, equalized pupils basically flat, but overall, that means an increase in spending per equalized pupil. Multiply that by the base spending amount, you do some other math with this base state tax rate of 92 cents, you look at our CLA, which actually helps us a little bit, and you end with a tax rate of a dollar, essentially a dollar two. Last year, it was .9361, so we have an increase of 9.36 percent. What that means in terms of home values, basically, if you have a $100,000 home or for every $100,000 in home value, it's an increase in tax of $94. Are we, okay, I can move on? That brings us to two-vote. It's a territory we've never been in before, but we're certainly not alone this year. There are several other schools, some of which in our district are in this two-vote predicament. Basically, there was an act passed in 2007 that said if your, if your proposed spending is above the statewide average, and we just heard the statewide average was 12,700 and something, and our spending year to year is larger than current year, inflation plus 1 percent, so inflation plus 1 percent is 3.2 percent, you must divide your vote into two votes, your budget into two votes. So when our budget, as long as those two conditions apply, our budget will have to be voted on in two votes. Part A will be the 3.2 percent. It's the inflation plus 1 percent. So that part of our budget as it stands right now is 7,124,108. Part B, which is the piece above inflation, inflation of 1 percent, the remaining piece of our budget, is 268,448 dollars. Both of the votes need to pass, essentially to provide the same level of services next year as we have this year.
What happens if that does not happen? What's then the next step?
So a couple of things can happen. In order for Part B to pass, Part A has to pass. If Part A doesn't pass, it comes back to the Board and the Board decides what they're going to do. Are they going to put out a new budget? Are they going to put out the same budget? They'll decide. If Part A passes, but Part B doesn't pass, same thing, can come back to the Board, the Board decides what they want to do with that Part B. Put back the same number, or reduce number, an increased number. That'll be the Board's decision.
Can you read what's in red, because I'm red-colored, so I can't see it.
I know, it looks really good on my screen. It says both votes need to pass in order for us to provide the same level of services next year as we provide this year.
Thank you.
Lynn, so if the teacher's salaries are contractually going up about $100,000 every year, that's more than the allowed 1 percent less inflation, isn't it, as a percent of our whole budget? So aren't you going to run into this every year?
No, we haven't, we haven't run into it. It's not, it depends on what you're doing with your budget. If your enrollment is declining enough where you don't need a classroom teacher, or the community decides that they can do something differently and you can offset some of those increases with decreases, then you're not going to have, your baseline budget isn't going to have, or the budget you present, isn't going to have that increase. We've just cut, and we've cut and, cut and cut.
Right, so of course, it's likely that that hundred thousand is going to keep driving you over that.
Well, the only good piece of news is that after this year, that act goes away. So the two vote requirement is gone after this year.
Just out of curiosity, what was the purpose of that act? The intent, I should say?
It was actually, honestly, even though we're stuck in it, it's led to some great conversation, that the, the intent was to get boards, or the thought was, boards are just putting money out there and get, asking people to spend willy-nilly. And I think the intent by the legislators were, let's make them really think about what they need. Well, the problem is, we've really thought about, and you've seen it in, in the budgets that we've presented for the past four years. And, and this has now come along, and it's made us try and find even more ways to, to redo our budget and to provide the services. The problem is, when you've cut, and you've cut, and you've cut, you're limited in what you, in what you can do. And when your revenues, I mean, there's so many little intricate pieces to it. If revenues were increased, we may not be in this situation. Your spending could go through the roof. If you have a concurrent increase in revenues, you're not going to get a huge increase in your, in your education spending. Does that, I mean, there, there are a lot of little facets to it. I could wax poetic for hours on these numbers, but, and my frustrations with it. But that was the, that was the general intent.
Lynn?
Yeah?
There, is there any loophole in that law that says that special education spending is exempt from those increases?
No, I sent an email the minute that we found out to ask Mr. Mason to double-check with the state, especially extraordinary special education, and there's not. There is a list of exemptions. If the state helped you build your building, you can exempt those costs. But special education costs, even though we have to provide them, are not exempt. So, knowing and seeing what you've seen, I think the board would like to hear from the, the community. All we ask is if, and we understand the fiscal impact of this, and we understand the potentials to the, to the school and the services. People are passionate on both sides. I would just ask you all to be respectful of everyone's opinion, and if you do have suggestions, please be specific. It would be really helpful, you know, when you're looking at saying you need to cut, knowing where we have the ability to cut, it would be helpful to hear that. It would be helpful to hear, I can't afford more than X percent in property taxes, or I think this is a reasonable amount. That, I think, would be most helpful to the board. So, Bob?
Are you taking questions from the field hour?
I am, can I sit down?
Please.
I just need a little tea.
Just, just for the record, Lynn and I had a telephone conversation this morning, in which I called her and asked for some clarification on the article which she wrote for the, for the Charlotte News. And what I'm about to share with you is what came out of that phone conversation. So Lynn should know there are no surprises in this. I, I have to hand it to the board, I really respect what you're trying to do here, and it sort of reminds me of one of my favorite Far Side cartoons, and it showed a man standing with the devil, and there were two doors in front of him, and there's smoke coming out of both doors, so you know it's behind them. And one door says do, and the other one says don't. And the man says to the devil, I said, I guess I'm damned if I do or damned if I don't. And I, I, I think, I think we're in that position right now. I'm a very bottom line oriented guy, and nothing is more bottom line than the impact that this decision is going to have on our tax rate. So I, I pulled the numbers that Lynn gave me, and I, I made a phone call to the town clerk, and I, here's what I'm going to share with you. So if you have a pen or a pencil and a piece of paper, you may want to write this down. Our total two thousand twelve tax rate for Charlotte was one point four eight one two. And I'll put this together if you want me to, in a letter to the Charlotte News, so you can have it. The Homestead Education Tax is one, the rate is one point three six nine one. That's ninety-two percent of our total tax bill. The Charlotte Central School portion is, as Lynn said, point nine three six one. The non-CCS portion, that's the Champlain Valley and everything else, the all other, is point four three three oh. So that Homestead Education Tax is comprised of sixty-eight percent Charlotte and thirty-two percent non-Charlotte. Okay, Lynn says that the projected two thousand thirteen CCS rate, which she showed on the slide earlier, was one point oh two three eight. I'm glad we agreed on that, I'd been really embarrassed if we didn't. One point oh two three eight, which is a nine point four percent increase over last year. Now, the difference, if you want to see what that's going to impact your tax bill, subtract from one point oh two three eight, the current rate, which is point nine three six one, and that's point zero eight seven seven. So take your current tax assessment, whatever your house is valued at, multiply it by point zero eight seven seven, and that will tell you what the impact of this decision is going to be on your taxes. For me, it's fourteen hundred dollars, because I've got a fairly large house. Okay, now, this point eight seven seven increase of this one point oh two three eight Charlotte school rate applies only to the CCS portion. Now, if nothing happens for two thousand thirteen, and we know that, that, that's, that's a fallacy, that's, that's, that's not going to be true, because we've already heard that the non-Charlotte education portion is going to be hit with a fifteen percent increase in healthcare rates also. So let's look at the numbers. If nothing changes for two thousand thirteen, the town rate will be point one 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 three. The local agreement, which is what the folks like the Masons and those that are getting exemptions get, that's point zero 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 eight, that'll stay the same. The non-Charlotte education portion will be point four three three oh, and the Charlotte education portion will increase to one point oh two three eight. That gives us a total tax rate for next year, assuming nothing changes but the Charlotte school, of one point five six eight nine. That is a five point nine percent, or a six percent increase on the rate over next year. That's the impact of this decision, taking the numbers we have tonight, and saying nothing else changes, but we know nothing else is going to change. So you're looking at roughly a six percent increase on, on your taxes next year, before we get to town meeting, and before we hear what, what the Champlain Valley and, and the state is going to assess us. Now, I heard on the news tonight that Governor Shumlin is planning on assessing everybody a twelve point five percent per gallon cost on fuel oil and propane. So take your propane bill, take your fuel oil bill in dollars, and take twelve point five percent and add that on. That's going to be a tax bill we know about next year. We also do not know what the impact is going to be of Shumlin's proposed healthcare mandate of single, single payer funding. So the, the point is, I'm trying to put this decision in the context for the taxpayers of what the bottom line is, and of where we're going to be hit from different places. I'm not telling you how to vote, this is your decision. This is the damned if you do, damned if you don't. If, if you folks feel that we don't want to sacrifice anything for the students, that we want to bite this bullet and take a five point nine percent increase, then vote for it. But if you feel, in light of all these other things, that you can't afford this, that's your decision too, then you got to vote no. I just want to make sure we're all working for the same level of information. That's...
Thank you, Bob. I just want to clarify, when you were saying for everyone else, because I think you understand that when, when he talks about the non-Charlotte portion, that's, our, our education tax rate in Charlotte is comprised of the CCS tax rate and then the CVU tax rate, both combined.
So CVU is in there?
CVU is that separate, is that point four three three?
That's what I thought, yes, okay.
Right, right, I just wanted to clarify that, that was CVU.
But it's Charlotte students at CVU.
At CVU.
Hi. It's our high school.
Exactly.
And you probably have those numbers at hand better than I do, but I think I saw the preliminary budget, our share of CVU is not going to really budge the tax rate this year, it didn't look like.
CVU to my, I actually, I, as a person who likes to stay informed and watch board meetings, I'm kind of befuddled by what's happening at CVU, because I think pieces have changed and moved so quickly. They will not finalize their budget until...
Till next Monday.
Till next Monday. I, I thought I knew what was happening, I don't, I don't, so I don't want to speculate whether, what, what they're going to end up. I don't know, Bob, you have any?
It's dangerous for me to speculate board behavior when it hasn't occurred yet, but it isn't zero, and it's, it's not ten percent, it's closer to something in the middle of those two.
Their increase, their tax increase.
Yeah. But it isn't zero, they're, they're not going to come out of this with no impact on your tax rate.
Other questions or comments?
I'm sorry, and I also, I, I meant, I meant to say to everybody, if you could please just state your name for, for Sandy or, or Minute Taker, that would be great, thank you.
Ryan Mechanic. I'll try to version my comments, because some of the questions that have been asked to, to certain aspects of what I was going to say. We, right now in Vermont, according to figures given by the most recent NEA statistics to the National Educators Association, are experiencing the second largest percentage decline in enrollment in elementary and secondary schools of any state in the country. And this is, I think mirrored to the fact that we're looking at a three percent decrease in Charlotte enrollment for the, the coming year. And despite this decrease in enrollment throughout the state and in Charlotte, in the state of Vermont, the NEA statistics indicate that we're the third highest in allotment of money for students through property taxes and/or state taxes per thousand dollar earn income here in the country. So there's a little disparity, our, 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 our allowance for student is certainly high. I think, right now, your figures indicate we're paying, taxpayers are paying fifteen thousand plus per student, according to your, your budget. I, I won't belabor this matter, that you're confronted with the, the burgeoning costs for teachers' salaries, health benefits return, et cetera. I, I must say, I was a bit chagrined to read in the front porch forum, someone who was obviously a school board advocate, saying, well, you know, you can't weigh in the school board for this quandary with the teachers, I mean, they're powerless, well, you folks did ratify the, the agreement with the teachers through collective bargaining, and, oh, you have to bear some responsibility in that. I am a bit bothered by something that happened two years ago, in the last discussion that the school board had before the third budget submitted. I sat here and was really chagrined to hear one of the audience, I think he's here tonight, point out to you, the school board, at about eight o'clock in the evening in a long discussion, that indeed, you had fewer enrollees for kindergarten than you realized. And you in turn sent out your accountant de jour to the hall to contact not one of the kindergarten teachers, but the supervisor of the kindergarten teachers, as we were told in attendance here, to confirm that, and indeed, it was confirmed. And the end result was that you did cut back from two full-time employees, three to two point five, I believe, in the budget submitted that, that might ultimately cost a third time. But how in the blue blazes do you, as a school board, have that lack of insight, not after one, but two budget rejections, and still not know what your projected enrollment is? Now, I know you've got figures issues, so this is probably not germane directly, but it led me to wonder, what is the line of communication between the principal and the school board? How could something like that fall through the cracks and have to be pointed out to you folks by an attendee in the audience? That, that's a sort of a sad commentary.
I think, you know, I recall exactly what had happened. We actually, every year, get the enrollment projections in, in November, of what our current enrollment is, and actually what it's going to be for the next five years. And I do remember specifically what was happening at, at that time. We were on the fence, trying to decide, should we fund another classroom, should we not fund another classroom? We sent our administration out, not at that meeting, we sent our administration out to call all of the preschools and all of the, the places where perhaps we would be getting kindergarten students to decide. And we had a very heated discussion at this table, should we fund, should we not fund? Are we going to roll the dice and hope nobody else shows up? And then what happened is that a teacher, a kindergarten teacher announced their retirement. And so the board decided at that point to accept the retirement, not fund, we rolled the dice, that time it worked in our favor. But the board was fully aware of what our numbers were, and we've pushed hard on, on our administration to get as best we can knowledge of, of our enrollment and what our needs are going to, are going to be. We know this town isn't going to fund kindergarten class sizes of twelve, and we were looking at, I think, kindergarten class sizes of nineteen, and should, you know, what should we do? There was a, there was kind of a grid that we were looking at. But we are all fully aware, it's on our agendas every November to look at the enrollment, and part of the administration's presentation to us every single budget season in December is instructional programming and staffing. So, I, I guess I, I remember it a little bit different, differently than that.
Incoming kindergarteners, something that we have, you really don't know.
People still could move into the class, it's not like, you know, second graders moving up to third grade, where we have a pretty good sense, usually, of what's going to happen. But...
The other comment, you presented the PowerPoint tonight, I, I think those were similar, perhaps altered from what the principal initially presented to you in the initial budget consideration, maybe I'm mistaken, but anyhow, I, I drawn those up off the computer and similar to what you showed tonight. And the comment by the principal, I believe you, you have two principals. The comment by the, the principal drafting the budget proposal was that, you know, corn is been cut about as stringently as could be done, and that, you know, granted, there'd been a tenth of the full-time employee cut here and a quarter there in past years, and he felt that you'd reached a breaking point, that you, you really couldn't cut further without compromising quality of education. This brings up the one last point that I, I'd like clarification on. Why, in a school of four hundred-plus students with eight grades, do you have to have two principals? You're looking at an outlay of, I believe, a hundred thousand dollars or so plus return of benefits, et cetera, et cetera. I can only cite as an analogy, a situation I'm familiar with in Syracuse, New York. I have a daughter who's been a school nurse in Jamesville Dewitt High School for four years. They have one principal, they have one thousand-plus students in grades nine through twelve. That principal was just chosen Principal of the Year in the entirety of New York State, significant honor. Their competency cannot be questioned, if you go by their testing format, which I believe is regents. They had the ninety-six percent competency in math and ninety-seven percent confidence in English in grade five. Why do we have to have two principals in our school, especially with the budgetary dilemma that we're in?
Well, I think I would be very cautious, I'd be curious to see what the other administrative structure is around that high school with a thousand kids and one principal. You could easily say the same thing about our principal at our high school, we have one principal. But we have four house directors, we have directors of guidance, we have, we have other administrative people to take the, the role of what we're asking our two principals to do. School quality standards say that to have a quality school, you need one principal for every ten teachers. We ha, and that's just teachers, that's not even teaching professionals in the school. We have twenty-three or twenty-four teachers at our school, not to mention the paraprofessionals and the coordinators and the other staff, the maintenance staff, the nursing staff, the cafeteria, that all need to be managed. And we looked at it, actually, last year at our retreat, because we had told the community when we hired both, that both, when we went to the co-principal structure, that we wanted to relook at it, not just put it in the budget ad nauseam and never look and see if the structure worked for us. And so we had a, a discussion last year, what is it, is it still to our benefit to have two? Do we need to? And looking at everything that has been done in our school in the three years, the advancement of the professional development for our teachers, the increased assessment of our teachers, making sure that our teachers are aligned and delivering the same level of quality education in each classroom to all of our kids, to keeping the building running, to the, we couldn't imagine having one person doing that. And so we've stepped back and say, okay, well, maybe you have one principal and you have an assistant principal. Well, guess what? For about the same amount of money, you get an assistant principal that doesn't, you're, you're basically paying the same amount, but they don't have the same level of responsibility nor authority than that a principal... nor authority than that a principal does. So it seemed to make sense, and I tend to talk a lot, so anyone else can chime in if they'd like. We still feel that it, having two, we, our school still warrants having two principals.
And historically, too, an assistant principal job tends to be a stepping stone, so you might have a lot more transitions, administrative transitions, if you went to that model.
And we did look at all of the administrative roles, and I think we went from three to two and a half at some point. So even though one principal at your school or anybody else's school, often there are several other administrators that are doing the same work that our administrators are doing, just have different names. So we have two administrators plus a special ed administrator, which is a half a time. So we have 2.5 administrators in our building. If you ask your daughter's school how many administrators they have in the building, it may be more than just the one principal that we're trying to compare. So it really is the support that is offered by the administrative level, it's not just how many principals you have, you have to look at it in a different, different way.
And of all the SU schools, we have the fewest administrators.
Right, right.
We're the smallest school, and we, you know, it does make sense. But it's not something that we just have put in the budget and just kind of said, we're moving on, we're looking at other things. It's a conscious conversation on our, on our part, so we thank you for giving us the chance to bring that up. Tom?
Thomas Noah, I've been living in Charlotte since 1991, and I want everyone on the board to know that I respect all of you, however, from my experience, my professional experience, I'm a retired Vermont special educator, and I'm also a retired educator from New York State. I have been in classrooms for many years, working as a special educator. I've worked in schools that had an awful lot less than what this one does, and perhaps it's part of my age, my experiences, where I've lived, my attitude towards responsibility and dedication and doing that which is the most difficult, makes my position thoroughly against what it is you have presented over the years I've been in this town. It seems to me, as I listen to what you share with us, it's somewhat close to the conscience of Congress, in that it's such a bunch of rhetoric and numbers, and it's a continuous scenario of this and that, but the reality is, when push comes to shove, is that it's not advantageous to Americans. And everything that you're saying here is really still putting us as taxpayers behind the eight ball. You seem to do the talk, but when it comes down to the walk, you fall short. I was at meetings when unequivocally, I repeatedly heard, the board was going to hold the line on contract negotiations with teachers, and they were not going to give a large raise, and they were going to hold the line on medical insurance. Well, guess what? You didn't do that. The spinal strength that was needed clearly wasn't there. I don't know what the reason or reasons were. So as you talk to us, you somehow expect us to accept these circumstances. But what's already been said, part of this dilemma rests upon your decisions, what you've decided to do over a significant period of time. I am now positioned, honestly, I don't blame the teachers for wanting more and more and more. That's exactly what you've taught them through all that period of time. They want this, bingo, they get it. It's never been an issue where they've had to fight for what they wanted. You talk about teachers are dedicated, yes, they are dedicated, I don't doubt that for a moment, but let's be reasonable with their salaries right now, across the United States of America, across the state of Vermont. The teachers in this school, wow, whoa, they don't really know how well-off they are. But once again, I don't blame them. You've given them an ideology of entitlement. So now we look at a budget, how the hell could you go backwards in salaries? You can't. You talk about a crisis, you're going to look at teachers and the next negotiation and tell them, no, no increases? I'm retired, I'm on a fixed income, and I have talked for years to this board about the cumulative effects of everything that all of us need to buy. Fuel, food, electricity. I don't understand what it is about me that thinks about that, and it seems to me that I don't know if that's the consensus of the board thinking about that. We were just talking about principals. I was at a school, several schools, where there was one principal for five, six, seven hundred students. They managed, they did a damn good job, they did the best job they could do, they rose to the occasion. I'm thoroughly displeased with the fact that it seems to me to be a situation where, when strength and courage is needed to take a position, that's not what's done. I know you have a responsibility to students, but you also have a responsibility to the taxpayers in this town. And I think that you've fallen far short of the mark. And every time a budgetary crisis comes up, inevitably, what happens? We wind up paying more. Where does it end? Where? Why can't what I'm telling you now, you honestly tell teachers, for example, we can't continue to do this? We're talking about teachers being dedicated, well, they have to have a strong sense of morality, they've got to, they're educators, they don't work in a widget factory. They've got to understand how they impact upon residents. And if they are dedicated, whatever it is their salary is, their dedication won't change. There is this thinking that the more a person's paid, the more valued they are or the better that they are? Well, let's think about all the CEOs at banks. They corrupted the whole economic system.
Tom, can I just say, timeout, I want to get to other people, I just...
I just want to say, I'm very passionate about this, you know that, and I don't mean to insult anyone, that's not the case, but from my perspective, I don't know what else to do, other than just tell you how I honestly feel. I don't know what else to do.
I appreciate that, Tom, I do appreciate it. I think, and I don't want to get into too much of an exchange here, but because I did, you know, eighteen months was a long time to negotiate, it's not as simple as telling the teachers, sorry, you're only getting zero, walking away. We negotiate as part of a CSSU board. The whole board couldn't say to the teachers, sorry, you're getting zero, because they have the option to strike. And when you put that option to strike up against a board saying, we're going to impose this, it's not as easy as having a strong backbone. You've got to figure out a way to compromise, and you've got to figure out a way to move forward. It's not as simple as just saying, because trust me, I tried, I'm not, I'm not moving from my position. It's, it's not that easy when there are other factors involved. Bonnie, did you want to?
I was just wondering about open seats for the school board. Are there open seats, are there people running, or?
Yes, we have two people running for, two open seats, Sue and I are not running. We've been on here for five years. Our hair is gray enough.
I'm just hoping that, you know, there are retired people in the community who have time and have the interest and care and could serve on the school board and help make some of these hard decisions before we get to this point, you know, be right in there advocating. And on another point, I'm, the thing that I worry about in cutting the budget is when I look at these levels of local control, and I see there is so little that the board can control, and those are things like whether we have computers and how big our classes are and what we're teaching, and whether we have the third edition or the first edition or something. It seems like if you're cutting in that high area, then the proportion of tax dollars that are going to insurance, utilities, fuel, goes up, and the proportion that we're spending on teaching the kids goes down. And that seems the wrong direction to me. So I'm thinking that it might be helpful for us to focus some of our energies on things like state policy, or energy policy, or education policy, insurance. So those things that we can't control, we have some influence over those. It's not that we can't control them, I mean, there are ways to influence that, but if we wait until we get to that little portion at the top and we cut that, then all of our money is going to be...
To nothing instructional.
Yeah, and, and less of it is going to actual education, that's what I worry about.
Thank you. Bonnie, there is a hand. Hi.
Hi, I'm Lee Sampson, I have two children at school, and I just wanted to, I think in contrast to many of the voices I've heard so far, express my gratitude and support for the school board and for our two administrators. What I've seen is that they figured out a way to do more with less, including our teachers. I don't think there's any point, honestly, to talk about the contracts at this point, they're not up for negotiation, we're looking at a budget that contains, in my opinion, nothing new for the children, which is disappointing for me, for my kids. I'm willing to say, okay, we'll give all that up, but it's the idea that we would then, you know, try to offset the increase in healthcare premiums by cutting more things from the children would not be acceptable to me, or to many of the parents here. I do understand concerns about taxes, I do understand, looking forward, that it is a strain for people, we need to come up with some solutions. I also understand that I pay taxes for lots of things that I don't benefit from in any way either. And we do that because we're a community and we care about each other. And, you know, I think everybody needs to think about that, too, think about, you know, who's going to be impacted here if we decide we're going to, you know, cut five percent from student programs, or from our teachers, or from our administrators. There's another side to this story, too, it's not just about taxes, so just wanted to, you know, express my opinion.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen.
I just have a two-part question. My first one is, worst-case scenario, what are we looking, what have you all thought about that we're going to look at for cuts? And then, secondly, since we are going to be voting in two new people, are you and Sue going to continue to help, or are you just going to get the new people up to speed and then they take it from there? So that's my two-part question.
Well, I'll take the first part first. We actually asked the administration what it would mean if that, if that second part of the budget didn't pass, because there's a perception that maybe that second part is excess. It's not excess, it's the remainder of the baseline budget, of the budget. And the administration came back to us, because eighty percent of our, our budget is salaries and benefit, we've basically exhausted every other opportunity for a non-personnel reduction. They would look at doing a uniform percent reduction in staffing across the board, so support staff would decrease, and the impact would vary depending on which personnel were cut. It would likely impact our student outcomes. They would cut professional staff, it would likely mean increased class sizes and/or caseloads, program reduction or elimination, things like the sports program, the drama program, music lessons, world language, increased class sizes, it'd put increased demands on the remaining staff, it's going to impact our student learning outcomes. They have also said that there would be a reduction in administrative staff, it would, you know, percentage unknown, but it's fewer hours of instructional leadership towards advancing all of our outcomes, so the professional development and the assessment of teachers, and moving our school, and keeping our school at the top of the state, which is where we've been, and I think the reason why many of us have moved to Charlotte, and why many people consider the town an asset. That's what, that is what we have. We haven't talked specifics, because we have cut so much in the past, and we have refused to add to the budget so far this year. Things that our administration is telling us we need, and we're saying, sorry. We're not doing one-to-one iPads like they have in Balliston for their middle school or in Heinsburg, you know, we don't have in Richmond. We don't have even things that school quality standards say we should have, and we're not adding. We're stay-in-status growth. And what we, Sue and I do, hmm, of course we'll have.
I remember what it felt like to be here the last time.
We wouldn't leave anybody, this school is too special. So I'm going to go to Erica, and then I'll get back to you, Brian.
Yeah, just, you know, correct me if my numbers are wrong, it looks like just you took an average of the last five years' budgets, and look just at educating non-special needs kids, so strip out the special ed, strip out all the administrative, you know, the CSSU charges that get pushed out, you know, like that. I think this year, we're at about a percent of that budget. Can you just give some color in terms of what some of those other, we've heard about the special ed piece, you know, what are some of those other big lines, the CSSU or administrative?
That would make up the majority of the increase?
Or even just over time, so maybe this year, it's not one of the big lines, but over time, that's been grown up?
Last year, it was special ed and the math coordinator position, that used to be grant-funded, that we absorbed. And honestly, we cut the budget from the past three years, so there wasn't, there weren't increases, there were decreases, and it was all we cut, person enough.
Right. And did we lose also, I mean, what impact did the school receive from federal stimulus funds?
We received about, oh gosh, a hundred and change in stimulus money, we used a little bit of it the first year, and we used the chunk, the big chunk of it last year, and really what we did with that money, because that math coordinator position was previously grant-funded, we slid that, you know, that money helped to offset the increase to the budget with that math coordinator position. We don't have that stimulus money anymore.
Right, I guess that would just be my comment, a lot of people are frustrated, some of the voices tonight, it sounds like the frustration can extend beyond just the local school board, and there's a sense that tax burdens, you know, are the source of, you know, distress of people at the national level as well, you know, we've received some, you know, we get type of money that stops, it all gets pushed down to the school board, you know, we don't like paying taxes to the state, but yeah, as those expenses get fed down to us, we're left kind of living the bill. It's easy to get mad at the school board, but, you know, in a way, it's just, it's coming out of a different pocket, you know what I mean?
Brian, did you have?
Just a couple of comments, and we'll record this on your time, it's more of a high-level program, but number one, I certainly agree with the lady who said that we're a community and we should be all there to help one another. In theory, that's, that's fine and laudable, but look what's happening to our community as a result of this huge school budget. And I'm talking not only Charlotte Central, but the CBU, obviously. We, as best I can project, spend about eighty-five percent of our proper taxes on the school budget, leaving the town of Charlotte fifteen percent for their revenues, and that allows them to have the luxury of functioning on a bare-bones budget. We have no police in the town of Charlotte, and that deficit is becoming progressively more apparent. We're now in the midst of a wave of burglaries and vandalism, God knows when that's going to end, talking to the state police, it's just a wave that's spreading northward from Rutland through Virgins and ultimately Charlotte, et cetera. I can't tell you the frustration, in waiting a half an hour for response from police from your house is being burglarized. We did. We have no police, and we're hung out the draw. And part of the problem is that so much money is being spent on the school budget that there ain't anything left over. And if we were getting absolute ultimate performance from our students, then I might be able to better, in my own mind, justify it. But I look at the kneecaps, and I listen to you, and I'm getting two different vibrations, and you may be right and I may be wrong, just so I apologize. But when I look at the kneecaps from last year, the question is, is the glass three-quarter full or one-quarter empty? And as a parent, am I going to be happy with a twelve percent incompetence in reading? At eighth grade, this should be the, the grand finale, the fruit of our lady, what the eighth graders do. A twenty percent incompetence in math, a twenty-one percent incompetence in writing, and a twenty-seven percent, and this is where things really fall apart, because I don't see where you're coming from, a twenty-seven percent incompetence in science, which was a year prior, forty-three percent. I mean... I mean, what's going on here? Are, are we really getting a bang for our buck?
I think standardized tests tell one story, and they're, we should come to our board meetings in April. Because the board asks the same question about, about the kneecap numbers. No, are we satisfied with twenty-seven percent of, of our kids not being proficient in anything? I think the board wants more, and we expect more, and we've set a very high bar. But I don't know how you achieve that if you keep cutting. I don't, I don't know how we keep improving if, if, if we keep cutting. Doesn't mean that you have to keep necessarily adding personnel, but we're not adding personnel. In fact, we're cutting science supplies.
Not pegging on, but it would seem to me that that's when soul-searching and creative ingenuity comes into play. Teachers assume a little more creative role than they had before. I think Tom could probably address that far better than I, but something's missing here, and we're paying through a notice board.
And we, we, we are, we are on the same page. We get it. We get the reports. And we are pushing the school to achieve higher levels on all of our, our outcomes. We are really getting honed in on what it is that we need to be doing here at Charlotte Central School and what it takes to get that done within our means. And, you know, the co-principal model and the best practices that the, the teachers are doing. And there are things that really are, we have set guidelines and outcomes that we really expect the school to be able to reach. And this is how they're going to get there. So, we are intentionally, everything in the budget is directed toward improving the children's education here at Charlotte Central School. There's nothing that we fund that is not directly related to them getting better at, at, at being taught here at school. And it, and that's why we can't cut anymore, because everything that's in there is necessary to be able to get the kids to do better. The things that we are not funding, I have a hard time with because we could be doing much more better if we had all these extra things in there. The science supplies and the one-to-one laptops, those could, we could even reach higher levels if we had more money, but we don't. So, we've looked at every little thing in that budget, and it is absolutely necessary to fund what we have in there so we can continue to make the progress that we've already seen with our really focused intent on achieving those outcomes and providing the resources for the teachers and the staff to be able to provide for our students. So, we are, we are on the same page, and we are really, we've made a lot of progress. And I'd like to be able to continue that progress in improving our test scores and our kids' education here at school. But, you know, that, we need your support to be able to provide those opportunities for our kids here at school. We don't want to lose ground and have us be the new Rutland. We don't want our kids to be out there, you know, vandalizing, you know. We, we have high standards here at Charlotte, and we have a, our board has even higher standards than maybe others, other boards. But it, it takes support of the community and it takes money. Bonnie?
I'm just looking at this first page where you have CCS outcomes. And there's three of them. There's robust academic foundation, there's citizenship, there's life skills. And I'm hearing what Brian's saying about, you know, looking at the kneecap scores and all that. How do we measure the other two-thirds of the outcomes that we're trying to, like the citizenship skills and the life skills? Are, are the kids in our community the bandles? Do they have better citizenship skills than that? I mean, how do we measure that? Because it seems like, I'm, I'm not saying that there isn't room for improvement in kneecap scores. But, you know, I look at CVU, and CVU is known in the state and outside of the state as an incredible high school. And they get incredible outcomes from CVU. And they have all kinds of people going in. And the kids go to amazing colleges and...
They have, they've come from a very good foundation in their K eight schools. And CVU very soon will be, have the same outcomes because we're aligning them all across CSSU. The administration is developing the indicators for each of those specific areas. It's not, not all of them are cut and dry such as a kneecap score or standardized test score. We actually have started this year piloting the citizenship. How, how do we know? And, and the citizenship piece is more defined than just citizenship. So, we've had, we've had reports on diversity. How are we doing in our school educating our kids about diversity? World language. How are we educating our kids about cultures other than our own and about the bigger world? There's a report coming up in March. It'll be our behavioral assessment. So, what are our kids doing within their school to be good citizens and what are the examples outside? We actually do have very specific data on the behavioral data. And then, at the end of the year, we'll be hearing a report on, from the social studies. How is that curriculum enhancing our children becoming, understanding what it means to be a good citizen? Understanding the history behind our democracy, those pieces. So, it's not, nothing is, it's not as cut and dry as a standardized test, but there are other ways that you can measure. Are we providing opportunities for the kids to learn and the feedback from those opportunities? What is it showing us? And that's just, that's just kind of a, a beginning. But the administrators are working on that. And I think the end of the year is when the date is, and, and it's not just our two administrators. It's, like I said, it's the entire S U's that's working on it. We just happened to start it here in Charlotte.
It's an excellent, it's an excellent question. This is our first year of trying to, trying to develop indicators and gain evidence as to how we're doing on those things. So, it's a beginning process, but it's a great question. It's just the right question.
And there's a, is there more information about our outcomes on our website?
On our website, under the board section.
More detailed about what, what it looks like?
What specific ones there are. Joe?
I think the communities could look at this as investment rather than expense. Vermont is one of the five states right now has negative growth rate. Imagine what your tax rate is going to be like ten years from now when families move to Vermont and say, hey, that's a choice of Charlotte or Shelburne. Oh, Charlotte doesn't have good school. Let's move to Shelburne. The growth rate of your community will decline. And right now, there's a great experiment out there across many parts of the country. When homes are being vacated for, for closure, guess what happened to the town hall? No money. Cut everything to the bone. Basically, the community died. Okay? So, we need to look at, you know what? I'm going to look at, I mean, I'll grab my box of clinics when I receive my tax bill. You know, I'm becoming like this year. You know, we all have to pay that. But if you think that we can compete with other community for the growth of the population to maintain your quality of life, we need to be competitive. Our competitors are Shelburne, Williston, South Burlington. Okay? If they can provide better education, better facility, better choices. When young family comes in here, where do you think they go? Where do you think they will get their tax money to go to? Not Charlotte. Hey, you know what? I have heard parents coming from other places, including me, the real estate person say, look at Charlotte. Look at Shelburne. They have great school. Okay? My money is staying in this community. My money is helping this community grow. Are you paying for car insurance? Do you look at the expenses or is it an investment? Homeowner insurance, expenses or investment? Oh, it's, it's a big expense when you write a check. God forbid you got in a car accident or a house burned down. You hope that they will pay off. If you think our community should just say, hey, leave it to all the old people. Let's not pay any more tax. Their community out there right now are for that. They specifically only cater to retired people. They cut their tax rate to the bare minimum because they don't want to have to pay for the school or anything else. But that's okay. If the community, that's what it wants. But remember, we are competing with other community out there. Look at Shelburne. Shelburne is, I heard that they are building a brand new, a, a library. Okay? What do you have, what do we have to offer in the next ten years? If you think that our tax rate is going to be bad, wait till when people don't move into this like community. And you still have to pay the same amount of tax to keep the same amount of roads, the buildings and whatnot. Right? We have to look at it as an investment. Is it going to hurt? Yes, it is. Nothing has, you know what? The only thing that has decreased from my bill is my utility bill. Because they promised when they merged with the G M P with C, C whatever, Central. Right. And I actually got a, I said, wow, look at that. I actually got, I got a break of this one. But then when I look at my propane bill, well, it went up the other way. So, I would like to, you know what, and the board, I would, do I like to three percent increase for the teacher? Not particularly. But then again, if you've never been to a high-level negotiation, you have no idea how stressful that situation is. I have been to some negotiations with really large monies, and this gray hair coming from that. How do you balance? How do you balance paying more? How do you get more by paying less? Okay? Yes, we can hold the line. You know what? Just like, I'm holding my breath. I'm sitting here. I'm not going to move. And guess how well that will work? I don't know you guys. It will like for me. You know, last time I checked, time out is for me. I need to, you know, go in negative ten degrees just to cool off, and then I'll deal with it. But I think that we, as a community, we must understand and we need to look into the future to put investment in, in the children. They are our future. Okay? They are our future in this community. If they want to stay in this community, kids, when they graduate, they go somewhere else. There's no growth in the month. You cannot get a good job. Right? As a community, you have to, cannot be short-sighted in thinking, well, you know what? Yes, it's going to hurt, but everything is, I mean, it's going, the food price is crazy. What are we going to do? Not eat? So, I mean, I, I'd like to have the committee look at it and say, is it perfect? No, it's not. Nothing is that perfect, but we can strive for the excellence that the board and the school are doing. Are they, are all the teachers performing great? No. Okay? We all know, know what, not all the teachers are performing where they should be. We're human beings. We understand that. In all organizations, even the best one like company have the least productive people there. But as a whole, when you look at as a whole in term of reputation as a school, Charlotte is up there. Okay? Charlotte is up there. And it is, no, it is not because we have any more superior being here, but we're working harder than other people to build the school up. We have teachers that really care about education and go to extra miles, go a trip to Idaho, more power to share. I mean, I was on that trip. Almost killed myself.
Good thing you paid for your insurance.
Exactly. So, so, you know, we have to look at all the breaks that, that school has done like for us as a community. And we need to look at, I'm not asking people to vote one way or the other, but I'm asking people to look at in a broader view as what a community election should be.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I really appreciate you providing this forum. It's really good to...
We have it every year.
Every month, actually.
Every month we have meetings just like this, and we always have the public hearings. It always seems to make sense to me to, to do this before you finalize the budget. Everybody can have an input and have a say, and it's a good thing.
Bob?
I wish the gentleman who just spoke would take your thoughts to the town meeting of Charlotte, Charlotte Select Board and make them known and see what you can do to overcome the anti-development attitude that exists in the town. Because every time anyone tries to put a proposal before the select board, I've heard more than once, we want to maintain the rural community, the rural nature of our community. Well, that probably means living back in the eighteen century, but...
Please open that one up. I want to be here. We'll be here for two more hours.
I appreciate what you said, and I, and I, but I, I think you're preaching to the choir here. I, I am concerned about something called gentrification, which is a broad general word for making a town too expensive to live there. And it, it causes a change in the, in the makeup of the town when you have increasing property tax rates, increasing cost of living. The original people who lived in the town, the farmers, the, the lower-middle-income people, the folks who originally built the town and created a sense of, of, of who this town is, are forced out because they can no longer afford to live here. And that's, that, this is the dand if you do, dand if you don't scenario. I'm concerned about that. I'm also concerned with the idea of investing in the future, but it's a decision the townspeople have to make. I'm not going to make it for you. I mean, I know what I, how I feel. But I am also very concerned about making Charlotte too expensive for a lot of people who were raised here and born here. They just can't live there anymore.
I think, Bob, you, you raise a good point. I wasn't going to talk about this too much. It's a big-picture problem.
Yes, it is.
We've made choices in our town to, to preserve open space, so, and, and not promote big developments, which is wonderful. But if you're a young family looking for affordable housing and you've got Charlotte and you've got Heinsburg, the options are in Heinsburg. There, the building costs the same to, to heat whether you've got five kids in it or five hundred kids in it. That's why your per pupil cost goes up. You know, we don't get impact fees from developers in our town like a Williston or a Shelburne does, hundred, twenty thousand dollars. That's that revenue piece that helps to offset the, the increase in, in the budget piece. So, there's a big conversation. I think Charlotte's also going to, and this is my personal opinion, this is not a board. We're going to have to look at, at looking at becoming part of a bigger unit. We may not be able to, it doesn't make sense, and we are probably going to end up cheating our kids in the long run by not being able to provide what they should have because we're too small, and it does get too expensive. And whether that means that we become, we join with Heinsburg, we join with the other, there, it's a conversation that has to have. And people have to understand that the ramifications of the decisions that they make. If we want to stay small and independent, that's great. It's going to be expensive. Bob, you're, you're, you're right. That was just my personal opinion. Okay, sidebar. That's for another day. All right, anything else?
Okay. We still have a little bit of unfinished business to deal with up here. I wanted to, we discussed last time about the, the laptop carts. And we talked about perhaps funding just one of the mobile laptop carts. I wanted to go back through and make sure that that was still what the majority of the board was thinking. And we also have the best practices substitutes to look at. I'll dive right in. I, I keep, I kept thinking after that meeting of the adage that until third grade, you're learning to read, and thereafter, you read to learn. And I feel like we need to start thinking about technology in that same way. I think from kindergarten through third grade, and hopefully not even that long, our kids are learning how to use technology. And at least by third grade, that's an integrated part of their curriculum. And as Greg kept saying at, at multiple meetings, we have to stop thinking of technology as a, something separate, something that we go to, this separate room. And instead, it should be completely integrated at least by third grade. Otherwise, our kids are falling behind, and they're losing a lot of educational opportunities. As everyone who was here last time knows, I supported keeping both of the carts that were asked by administration. We asked them to prepare this vision budget, and we've accepted nothing on that vision budget. It was an awful lot of work for them to do that. And we want them to be transforming the way we educate our kids so that they're ready for the 21st century. So that they're ready to, you know, fill jobs that haven't even been, been created yet. And I feel like we owe it to at least embrace a tiny part of that vision and, and do so by getting those laptops in at least our fourth-grade classrooms, if not our third and fourth. So, I urge y'all to at least keep one cart in. And I'll stop there.
Kathy, do you have anything that you want to put on the line?
Nope. I, I kind of started this. I was in support of all of the decision packets when they were, when they were presented to us because I have, I have great, I have great, I think that we really owe it to our kids to fund all of these things. They're all great ideas. We could do much better from with, you know, we could do so much better. I hear people tell me all the time, we could do so much better. You're right, we can, but it costs all these, these line items to do that. We can't do anything without the support of the town. And the way that I he, I hear people tell me all the time, now is not the time for full-day kindergarten. Now is not the time for, you know, for adding anything to the school budget. And as much as it is against my own personal feelings about it, I think we should fund all those things. But I just, I, we need the support of the town. but I just, I, we need the support of the town. And I think that funding extra computers at this time would be a bad idea. So I actually like to change my vote and to not fund any of the extra laptops as much as it pains me to say this, but I think that we really need to hold the line and be strong and have courage and say, we will open the doors and provide no additional services for the kids, even though it costs 5% more, and not go any lower than that. So I think we should not be adding anything for this next budget just so we can get the support of the town, realizing that it, you know, it pains us all to make that decision. But I think that we need to not add anything to the budget and hold that line and keep it the same as it was last year. The same services and not fund those, that decision packet for the technology. So I would say not support the decision packet at this time.
My, I generally agree with Suzanne. My concern is if you're looking historically, we haven't added anything in how many years? And when is that year gonna come where we can add these things in the budget? And I think it takes just as much backbone to get in and say, we need some of these things in our budget. How many years can we go without adding anything? For exactly what Joe was saying, to be competitive. People choose where they live, people will move to where their schools are. People in this culture will make decisions based on their children's education and where they live and where they will put their tax dollars. So I understand the position we're in, it's hard to put out a message that we are holding the line as a school and as a budget. But I, I really worry about how many years this is gonna go on and how this is affecting the reputation of our town that nothing is added. And our school in many ways is very competitive, but over the long term are we gonna start losing some of that competitive edge? Clyde, did you pass on this? Did you want to say something about this? Because it sounds like, it seems like we're heading down this way, but I don't know.
I just jumped in first because I really felt sad that we're taking this out when I thought we'd sort of decided last week, so I'm sorry I passed over you.
Go ahead, I'm listening.
Okay. So what I said last time, and I, I'm still in the same place, is that I think we should fund one cart. I can now see that I'm gonna be in a minority on that now, so it probably won't happen. But my opinion is that we, if we lose ground in technology, which we already have and will continue to do if we, if we don't fund this cart of laptops, again, like you're saying, eventually we're gonna have to make that up. Or we will be known as a school that is behind in technology. I, I think, I also have Abby's voice in my head as a, as a good budget buddy, asking questions about, okay, are the teachers ready to use it? How will they use it? Is it age appropriate for the children? Let's have those conversations as well. And, and I take those questions seriously as well. I don't think just owning technology improves our technology education or improves our, any kind of education. However, we can't help our kids be technologically literate and access the best practices in education in some cases without the use of technology. So I think we need to upgrade our technology, I think we need to provide access to it. I think a, a, a mobile lab, a mobile lab, technology lab or a cart of laptops with a classroom set of laptops in it is a good step in that direction. So I support one cart. I would, you know, the proposal was for two, which I think also makes sense, but given the budget climate, compromise to me is to support one. I will have difficulty paying my taxes myself, I'm worried about it personally for my own household budget. But I don't, I, I don't see any, any other way around this. And I, I don't think I'd be a responsible board member if I let the technology of the school disintegrate. I mean, that's a dramatic statement and it's physically not disintegrating. However, as, as everyone here knows, it's very, you can fall behind very quickly in technology. And as an educational institution, we have to remain current.
And we do fund our technology, we, this is an additional, because we have, we have replacement plans and, you know, upgrades and iPad, we're, there's, we are funding technology, this is just an additional level.
That's true.
Of funding. Clyde?
After you.
After me? Boy, that's a first. So I have a couple of things. And I do tend to be the one that is looking at the bottom line. And it's really hard for me to compromise, Sue knows this, because she's always been the one that's compromised and I've held my ground when I felt very strongly. I think part of me feels like funding a cart is like the, the money that we put in every year for facility management, you know? We, we put in fifty thousand dollars, actually thirty-five thousand this year to work on those projects and O and N. Because if you keep working at it little bit at a time, little bit at a time, little bit at a time, over time, you, you tackle the problems, whereas if you wait until the end, you, you've got a big bill to pay. We've tried to look at everything in this budget as are we fixing a problem or are we enhancing a program? And I gotta tell you that I'm torn between whether the lab cart is fixing a per, problem that we have or are we enhancing a program, are we growing something? And I look at all the other towns in the SU with the exception of Williston, which is in a very different financial situation than we are. None of the other schools are adding to their baseline at all. So I, I don't know that we would be looked at differently if we didn't fund, if we didn't fund the technology because nobody's adding to the, to their baseline within the, within CSU with the exception of Williston. I guess knowing that we also have, have been funding iPads and, and there's additional technology that we've been able to acquire over the years and knowing that we're going to have a big technology audit that's gonna look at all of our technology needs and how we're using it now and is it being used efficiently and what is the best use of technology? I would probably advocate holding the line and, and not funding. I will compromise and, and not fund that computers. Now it's your turn.
This is always a difficult meeting because you have the intersection of so many issues, some of which are immediately germane, some of which are not. And then you also have the further confusion of comparing apples to oranges using one sort of evaluator for one decision and another sort of evaluator for a different decision. It would be fun, kind of, to engage each of you who has spoken on the subjects that you've brought up and the assumptions that underlie those opinions. But we don't have time for that because we've already been here really longer than we need to be. So what you need to do is boil down the, the thought process to looking at the things that are in the budget and try to make a decision, I think primarily about educational quality. And then as much as this may antagonize some people, that's a decision you make first. And then you consider the cost. The line about where the cost is too extreme is very gray. And as you've heard, it depends on who you're talking to, what their values are and what their assumptions are. So all you can do as an individual is say what yours are and go on with that. When you look at this, the options for things that are in the budget to control cost, you can spend a lot of time theorizing about inside and outside the box, but you need to get down to reality. To make the point, the example, we could eliminate buses. There's no legal requirement for buses. How much do we spend on transportation?
Two hundred plus thousand.
Yeah, but we're not going to do that. So in this budget, the things that, in my opinion, are subject to question, I don't believe we need two administrators, I made that clear a long time ago, that's not a new opinion. I don't believe that we need to continue on with the primary level educator that we added last year. Our assumptions about class sizes are not founded on any meaningful data. And there are a lot of school systems around the country that achieve excellent results with class sizes that are larger than ours. We have knee jerk tendency to assume that smaller is better. And again, it's one of those gray lines, there's probably some point at which you could demonstrate it, but we're not near that line. The assumptions about technology for the laptops are assumptions and there's no real convincing evidence that we need to start teaching kindergarteners, first graders, second graders and third graders how to use computers. There are other probably more significant things that they could spend their time on. Not to mention the fact that the overwhelming majority of these kids have that technology at home. I'm gonna vote against this budget and it's kind of weird because while I agree with you folks about the laptop thing, at the end of the day, I'll be opposed to the overall budget. The question always arises, and a couple of people have addressed it, if you take out, for example, some of the things that I'm talking about, what is the immediate effect of that going to be on the tax rate? That some people are very concerned, well, everybody's very concerned about. But the answer is, in this year, negligible, almost nonexistent. The point that came up under discussion about teachers' contracts, again, this year, really not an issue, nothing we can do about it. I would remove from this budget any laptops, I'm not sure where you guys are with that. I would remove the primary teacher, I'd remove an administrator. And that's about it. But that's more than you folks are gonna be willing to remove. So the end of the conversation is, I'll vote against the budget for those reasons. Because that's what we can do, those are the things that are accessible to us. The cumulative effect over time really only kicks in if you demonstrate that kind of judgment year after year. So that's my answer.
Okay. I'd just like to, I should keep my mouth shut, but I feel like the argument that a lot of kids already have technology at the home is something we should be really careful about incorporating into a budget because that can really magnify the differences between kids, the vast majority of kids in this community that have a lot of resources and those that don't. So we should be mindful of that. I mean, I'm quite sure that the laptop cart isn't going to pass this budget cycle, but we should be thinking about that, that the more we can do to level the playing field for all of the kids in this community, the better off we are doing for our community and our state and our country.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
If you're going to allow that kind of debate, you're gonna be in for a lot of trouble. But since you've allowed it, you're right, there is an unlevel playing field. And the real discussion, the meaningful discussion would be some way to address that issue other than proliferating computers at kind of an unlimited expense throughout our school. A confidential, for example, program to address the needs of individuals at home would probably be more meaningful. We can argue about that for a long time.
But there is an audit, a technology audit taking place on the SU level to evaluate what we have and how we use it and how to move forward with that. So I, I'm confident that this will be looked at very, very closely over time, that we'll make sure that we're doing the best thing for our kids here at CCS. So I'm, I think we'll be all right.
It's not a debate unique to CCS, I think every school
Right.
is in the country is looking at how to best incorporate technology, you know? And especially when a lot of times the kids know more about using it than their teachers do. It's an interesting curve and.
It's a pretty longstanding conversation too, at least fifteen years.
Okay, the last decision then, if we don't fund the mobile laptop cart is, oh, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, I noticed there's, I think that the computers are a big issue, but I also do think that you can look to PTO to raise the funds. It is, you know, it's easier to raise money when you're going for a specific thing. I know with you, you did the entire, not you personally, but your group of PTO, you did the computer lab. Other PTOs have done, you know, lockers, playgrounds, you know what I mean? There are other ways to have it funded so that if you can't fit it in, people will pick it up.
You hope.
Because it's a doable number.
We've put a lot on the, as, as a PTO person said, do you know how big our budget is?
We've put a lot of stress on.
I know, but as, you know, we did the playground and it was much easier to go and say, hey, we have this big number and we're trying to fill it. And we have a need instead of, you know, because then parents see a direct result. They don't, not everybody knows the PTO funds for wins and does as much as they do and they do do a lot. So I'm just saying that it's a possibility.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, so the last thing is the money for the substitutes for the forty-three twenty for that.
I just, I mean, I struggled with this too, I, I don't know why it's not in the budget.
It wasn't in, we didn't budget for it this year, correct? That's part of our problem, so that's why it wouldn't have been in the baseline because it's not in this year's budget. So we're running an over on this year because it wasn't included.
And we're gonna try to make it up?
No, so this.
Just to make sure it doesn't happen again.
It doesn't happen again, this is a three-year program, so the program next year requires substitutes.
And the year after as well.
And the year after as well.
I, I mean, if, if you have a philosophical objection to having any raise, then I guess you'd vote no, but to me it, it makes sense to include it. It should have been part of the baseline, I guess, had we thought about it, as should have that primary teacher. But they weren't, to me, we're funding the, the professional development, so I think we need to fund the substitute teachers that are required to allow that to happen.
I, I, that makes sense to me, you know, the primary teacher, I don't think of as an addition or the decision packet really because it should, it's the same things that we're offering this year, we're not adding anything. We're not adding subs, we're just paying for the ones that we currently are needing. Same thing as this year will be next year. Same thing as this year will be next year. So I don't have a problem with putting that four thousand in. Thinking about it in a way that we're the same services, just can't remember. Should have been on our baseline, I think. Okay, so the forty-three twenty for the math studio is added in. So seven, three, nine, six, eight, two, six? Wait, no, that can't be seven. Eight, seven, six, thank you.
Can you say that again? I'm sorry, I wasn't writing.
Seven, three, nine, six, eight, seven, six. So we're moving on to Action Matters, if that's all the discussion. Thank you for all of your input. Yeah?
Let me just make things clear. At the risk of confusing everybody, there are things in here that I agree with that should be funded. For example, for the forty-three hundred dollars for the substitutes for the math education. We of course have to fund that. I would also fund the five thousand dollars for the books for the young people. The Young Writers Project, I would also fund. I would also include the money for the four wins. And if it turns out that we get money from the PTO, that's great. We can use it for something else. But in total, I'm talking about, what, fifteen thousand dollars? So the confusion is having to vote against the entire budget. When of course, there are things that should be in it, a couple of which are not. But that's just for the record.
Thank you. Okay. Do I have a motion to adopt the FY fourteen proposed budget in the amount of seven million, three hundred ninety-six thousand, eight hundred seventy-six dollars? Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
I need the annual warning in articles. Can I just, can we just approve? We should probably see them. Can we just approve them collectively or do we need to approve them individually?
You can approve them collectively. If there's any, we want copies of the articles over here. Not amended. So I'll do markups for you.
Thank you.
You need more? Please.
Yeah, we could use a couple. Thank you. Stop some spares.
On the change sheet, you've changed the warned budget amount to seven, three, nine, six, eight, seven, six. So we'll work to change the supporting documents of a summary budget by function of revenue to agree with that. If you go to the last page on the articles, the articles you should approve, modify Article Five to seven, three, nine, six, eight, seven, six. And modify Part B of that same article to two, seven, two, seven, six, eight. And that's what you should be entertaining for approval at the moment.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve those two for that one article? So moved. Second?
Second. Article Five, is that what you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Article Five. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Article Six would allow us to assign any fund balance as revenue if we had any fund balance to assign as revenue. And we had this discussion last year. Even though we don't have any fund balance to assign, we still have to warn the article. I think that was the trouble we got in last year. So do I have a motion to approve Article Six? So moved. Second? Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Article Seven is to allow, to elect a town school district moderator. Do I have a motion to approve? So moved. Second?
Second.
All those, or any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Article Eight, motion to approve.
I thought Bob said we didn't have to do each one.
I know he didn't. So why did I have to start at five? All right. Do I have a motion to approve Articles Eight and Nine? So moved. Second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, six point oh. Six point one, annual meeting and budget vote preparation. Is, do we want to do anything different from last year in terms of the annual meeting, what we present? Which is essentially what was presented tonight. And Chris, okay, so I will prepare that for the budget hearing, the annual meeting. Somebody join you for when you prepare that, just to prepare for the next year's, you know what I mean? It might be I've already said that I will pass along all the templates. I basically update most of the templates every every year. So I will, I will pass that along. And the budget vote piece, the articles?
I know, I have, yeah, I said I would write something. I haven't yet just because Monday, yeah, to know the final number. So I'll, I'll work something up and send it around for
And I meant to tell you that I would, I think I told you last time and I haven't sent it, is the flyer that we sent out last time as well.
Yeah.
I can make some edits to that and send that out.
Did we pay for a flyer last year? We did. And we have money in the budget for
Postage. We do. Okay, anything else? If anyone else has any other ideas. I know the PTO was looking at copies and I was going to put together a sheet of talking points to get out to you guys so that everybody is using the same numbers and on the same page. I will work on that as well. Are we going to be able to go to the Grange? Yep, on the nineteenth at seven o'clock. Oh, okay. Have we changed our meeting? That's down here. We have to discuss that. Oh, okay. And are we going to be doing like the Senior Center or anything like that? Well, the Grange actually is at the Senior Center now. And my guess is that's probably a similar population. So we just need to decide what kind of format we want to use. If we want to do the PowerPoint, if we want to do general discussion. You know, it's hard when you start talking numbers to just talk numbers. Right, right, sure. But I hate PowerPoint sometimes because they're kind of boring. That's also to meet the candidates tonight, so there's already kind of a format. Okay. So maybe if you guys could think about that, about how you want to if you have some ideas.
Maybe find out from Heather or Dorothy.
What's available.
Yeah, do they want the board to go first or we're going after all the candidate?
And does something like that need to be warned if we're all, that you're like, if there's more than three of us there? I mean, does that count as business? You know what I mean? I think we, I think we warned them the last time that we did them at the Senior Center, just to cover our tracks. Right, just in case. Oh, sorry.
Do you think it is worthwhile to have another PTO event with questions for someone on the board? We have a meeting on the twelfth and we can publicize it even more that this is, you know, another opportunity to have your questions answered and hear the process thus far.
I could, I, I could do that again. We have to, we're trying to figure out when we're going to do our next board meeting.
Right.
So can I kind of, I, I think that's a great idea and I'd like to do it if we can, if I can, if we can make that work.
Okay. Was the last one well attended?
It was well attended. There were twenty, there were a lot of people there.
Good, that's great.
Any other thoughts? I'm going to move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Come on. Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Eight point oh, director's comments.
I just want to reiterate something that I said earlier. Or perhaps refine it. You can't, you can't debate value, well, you can debate value judgments, but you're not going to change anybody's opinions. Those, those decisions which are based in value judgments are not going to be subject to rational discussion. Decisions which are, at least in theory, based on some sort of a accurate and reliable and trustworthy number, you can't. The numbers that you have are demonstrated to be reliable. The things in between get very gray. And I'm going to refer to something that Sue said just to make the point, but not to initiate a debate. When you talk about Charlotte becoming the new Rutland.
I didn't really mean that.
You know, when Charlotte has the demographics that Rutland has, then you could talk about a comparison. But at the moment
I thought I was joking.
Those are, well, we all know what Freud said about humor. The, the implications of those kinds of comments are kind of misleading. So when you have a conversation about what you're trying to achieve, as much as possible, you want it to be rooted in fact. And a number of the issues that were brought up here this evening are worthwhile issues that need to be discussed. But there's really no point in discussing them here. Enough said.
I just want to say thank you to the audience, many of whom already left, and encourage you next year to come even earlier because the earlier we get your ideas and input, the better. Thank you so much to Jenny and Abby for being our first time ever budget buddies. And thanks to Elaine and Bob and Greg and Audrey. I know it's, this season's a ton of work for you and really appreciate all that work.
I just want to say I take it
So I agree with all of that. I found it very instructive to hear the audience. And I found myself finding things to agree with and polar opposites, which is an interesting experience. I want to say thank you to the board and whoever came up with the idea of the budget buddies. Thank you for the opportunity, although I did not enjoy it at all. Which is a, which is a form, which is a form of empathy for how complex this, you know, all of these decisions are. And it's just, that's, if, that's what I have gleaned from this process is that probably even, even if I had become involved much earlier in some of the questioning and the reasoning behind it, I don't, I don't really think it would be any easier or that I wouldn't be able to offer that much more insight on some of the decision packets. So thank you for everyone who has served on the school board and for administrators. Thank you very much. And to Lynn especially, I really appreciated your facilitation and your listening and your invitation to the audience and the community to be here.
Thank you. I, I just want to say I take it back about Rutland. Sorry about it. It was a joke. It was inappropriate. I didn't really mean it. I just was going on and I thought it would be funny, but I take it back. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Clyde. I didn't mean anything. Well, you thought about it enough to bring it back again. An hour later. That's really all I have to say. I share what Abby said. Thank you very much for the opportunity. I think it's great for the board to be reaching out to the community to try to increase this dialogue throughout the process. It's with the best intentions and it's, you know, maybe didn't get them as many people involved in the audience early on, but you know, it's, it doesn't take a year. I think over time that the efforts to get the community involved in the whole process will pay off. So I appreciate that the board's given Abby and I the opportunity.
So I want to, I want to thank the public for coming and some people with prepared comments, other people listening carefully and spontaneously responding to what they're hearing. It's such a valuable process. And especially now that the school budget goes, is determined by an Australian ballot, it's really important to have people come and dialogue with us. We come here month to month and often Joe's our only audience member, or Joe and Tom, I should say.
Mandy's been on this.
Yeah, okay, a few. So those stalwart people that come every month are really important, but the larger population is very important as well. And I, I too have the experience of, of finding commonality in people who were ending up in a different conclusions. And that's, that's what this kind of deliberation is all about. On the theme of regrettable comments, I regret calling the technology of the school disintegrating. It's really not. And we have put money to support the infrastructure of this, of our technology as well as the technology audit. And I think those are very valuable things, so. I'll retract that. In solidarity with you.
Well, you know, I wish I could say that this last budget season has been the best ever, but I keep waiting for it to get easier and it doesn't. And I, I don't think it ever will because our children are our future. And we want to give them everything, that we want to give them and make sure that they're, they are best prepared because they're going to take care of us and they are our future. And then there's that pragmatic side of me that says, but at what cost? And I, the conversations that I've had with community members and the emails that I've gotten and the phone calls that I've gotten, I still remember conversations from four years ago. They stick in my head. And that, I think, has been the most I think that will stick with me most every budget season is that there isn't, nothing is black and white. It's grades of sha, grades of shade. It's not fifty shades of gray. It is shades of gray. And, and, and there are no easy answers as much as you're looking at the person up there saying but it, it's just so, it's so clear. It isn't so clear. I think if I have, can leave with anything, I want everybody to know that I have heard all the sides. And I, I wish I could fall asleep at night thinking, I made everybody happy. Because a lot of times you fall asleep at night thinking, I've made nobody happy. But I do know that I think we have all tried our hardest. We've certainly listened. We've learned. And I think, I think we have led to the best of our ability on this budget. So thank you, all of you. Thank you for putting up with my numbers and my PowerPoints. Thank you to the administration for last minute emails and phone calls, looking for numbers at, at the drop of a hat. I really appreciate it. Like I said, I wish I could say it's been fun, but I have appreciated it. And I've had that these past five years, so. And thank you to our budget budget buddies. I said that last time. Thank you very much. Okay, now we have an issue of meeting dates that we just need to address. The next CSSU board meeting is the thirteenth of February at five. The board meeting on the nineteenth, we've got the Grange conflict and also Elaine and Bob can't be there. It's our second quarter FMR. It would be nice to have Bob there for that. There is not much else on that schedule. I had put out the twelfth as a date, a potential date. That doesn't work for everybody. So I have a, I, I, I offer a compromise perhaps. On that thirteenth, we know we have the administration because they're all going to be at CVU for the CVU meeting. We could, it's, we, we don't have a whole lot on our agenda. It literally, I think, is It literally, I think, is the second quarter FMR. There's a facilities report, an update on what the facilities committee has been on. There are no presentations. There'll be an, an enrollment update and principles. I mean, there's very little on that agenda. We could have a meeting after the CSSU meeting on the 13th at CVU.
We've done that before. We've had meetings over there after, in the past, I recall.
We do it in June usually when we do our business meeting. We do that all together.
I was expecting that option to come up and that makes sense to me. It would be, what, at 6?
No, it would be at 7.
7, all right. Yep, no, I'm, I'm okay with that.
How does that work? I know you couldn't do the 12th and, because you're in for Jen's.
I think it was the 13th that I couldn't do.
I thought you told me you couldn't do the 12th. I'm pretty sure you told me the 12th.
What day of the week is the 12th?
It's a Tuesday.
Yeah, no.
The 13th is a Wednesday.
Yeah, no, I'm certain that I said I'm not avail, I know I'm not available on the 13th. I don't know what you heard, but that's what I, I'm sure you can get it done without me if it's that limited a, agenda.
It's, it's pretty tight. I mean, I think we could set a record for fastest meeting accomplished.
Well, good, then I won't miss any.
Well, we'll send you the highlights.
Thank you.
It will be my last meeting.
He can watch it.
Oh, my God. What a missed opportunity there.
I think you should change your plans. Okay, so we'll do it the 13th at CVU.
Go ahead, finish that.
The 13th, CSD Board meeting, the 13th at 7:00 at CVU.
Do you know what room? We don't know room yet.
No, we'll have to figure out a room.
It'll be listed when you walk in, right? They'll put it on there.
And just as long as, can we get you for the first 10 minutes?
Sure. Is it your last meeting?
It's my last meeting. And Sue's, too. Don't forget that.
Okay. Okay, so, since I just don't, I had to be told that it was your last meeting. I hadn't put that together yet. I just want to say that in watching you do this again and thinking about the turnover of your position and two positions, both of your positions on the board, you're a class act.
Oh, thank you.
I just want to say that.
Thank you.
I haven't always agreed with you. I don't think any two of us have, have the same voting record. I don't, we never, I don't think there are any two people here who have always agreed with each other, but you're, you're a class act.
Thank you.
And Sue, I've really appreciated your, you came on with certain goals in mind and you've stuck with them. And because there are certain issues that you feel strongly about and have stuck with them consistently, they're in my head.
Right.
So, you have, I won't, I can't, I can't. So, you, your legacy will live on in the board, in my head.
All right. I mean, I can't even accomplish, but at least we can talk about it.
Oh, that's not true. You got me to compromise.
Take that off the list.
All right. If there's nothing else, I have some motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.